Ms. Haines?
Yes.
Mr. Holden?
Yes.
Mr. Gill?
Yes.
Ms. Sullivan?
Yes.
Ms. Polino?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Yes.
Mr. Scramble?
Yes. Could everyone please rise? Karen Chavez is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Chavez. Superintendent, we have delegates and visitors?
We do.
I don't see the correct ones, but...
Tonight, I would like to introduce to you from Highland Real Estate, Mr. James Polino. Also, I know that Cheryl Howard is on the agenda, but I'm going to turn it over to James, who wants to talk about the high school beautification, because I assume he's representing the group.
Yes, thank you. Good evening with the school committee, and thanks for having us here tonight. The reason that we're here is to talk about what you've already contributed to the improvements of the temporary high school. We did do some reading about the improvements you made in the interior, the painting coming up to make the children, high school kids, feel more at home just in the temporary facility. We appreciate all the efforts that you've made, and we thought that we would contribute to those efforts by making some improvements to the exterior landscape. We asked Mr. Honan to help us with it. I'm sure you all know Richie Honan, and he came up with a temporary plan, which I'm hoping all of you had a chance to look at. Our plan is to go out and talk to some landscapers and some other businesses as far as contributing to make the exterior a nice presentation for the students and add to what you've already done further. So, we would ask that you could take a look at that and let us know what your thoughts are, and if you feel that's all we give us here, go ahead to start the project. I think we'll follow the standing. Cheryl, Mr. Honan, would you just continue to help assist us with the improvements here?
I will. Yes. Happy to do it.
Do you have any questions on what the plan is? Yes, for sure.
I would just like to say, as John knows, I'm a stickler about not just making of the inside of our building, which I think that all of the people that have worked inside of that building have done a terrific job in such a short amount of time. But I love the outside of the building, too. I think that's the inviting part, you know, to have somebody come in. And personally, I'm thrilled to see ideas on how you're going to do that and just the idea of you doing that. So, I just want to say, I think it's a great idea. And I think it's a good pick-me-up for the students to, you know, to see your building and thinking that people from the community care also. And I think that's as people as important to me. Thank you.
I just want to echo that. Thank you for your interest in it. The outside of the building is very important as well, like the welcoming in. And John, I'm sure that you'll be able to coordinate whatever needs to be done there, make sure it fits.
And Chairman, are you just asking us permission to proceed with this?
Yes.
Now, we thought that we'd come before you to make sure that you understood what we're doing and get your approval on it?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Perrin?
Motion to grant the permission to move forward to reach the goal of beautifying the Winter High School temporarily.
I'll second that. Any discussion?
If it can be done, as you move forward, looking for landscapers and whatnot, maybe we include students if that can be coordinated during the time, days, Saturdays, we need some students that might be interested.
Community exercise would be awesome. I think that'd be great.
Yeah. Good idea.
Would you be identifying Highland Real Estate in any way in this project?
No. No, we want to make this a community event. It's for the children, so it's not my intent to put a sign up or get any publicity from this. I think we want to entice other businesses that could contribute. Maybe we'll talk to the Chamber of Commerce and make it a community event. This is for the children.
Thank you, John.
That's great.
It's great.
Thank you.
And I have to say, I can't take credit for it. My sales staff, they came up with the idea, and I had no choice after that.
Not with that crew.
They can hate us.
They are very persuasive.
They can.
But that's the good quality on the sales staff.
As has been said, I can't thank you enough for what you want to do. And I, as you know, in the interest of public disclosure, I graduated high school with Mr. Polino. I bought my house from him by way of Mrs. Cash. I thought you were older than me. You're not older than me?
He stayed back a couple of times.
The only one to tell I'm younger than is President Gill, actually.
I won't respond to that. I'll tell you later. Thank you all so very much.
Oh, thank you.
We have a motion on the floor.
We have a motion on the floor. We have to vote. Ms. Haines, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
For the hundredth time, thank you so much. All in favor of approval, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Abstentions? Generalists? Oh, I'm sorry. Mrs. Polino?
Full disclosure, I'm married to a son. Full disclosure.
And you have a stand for that reason? Okay. I mean, you can say it for whatever reason you want, but...
That's fine.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, girls.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on, we do have our high school class officers. Michael Mazzoni, who's the treasurer, Annie Mahoney, who's the president, are here. Do you have other class officers? I'm sorry.
Mr. Maggie is the vice president. Claudia is the keeper.
Well, Madam President, I'll have you come over and have a seat, and you could introduce your crew and...
I'd show some service tonight.
There you go.
Oh, my God, that's so funny.
The floor is yours, school.
So, we wanted to propose two things. We want to have a night on Miller's, the big one, as a fundraiser for our class. And it would be like, I don't know if you guys have ever seen Relive for Life or been to it, but it's basically like, it's like the fundraiser for cancer except for it would be for our class. And you, there wouldn't be tents. We could get big awnings and stuff, but we could charge people like ten, fifteen dollars to come in. We could have like fifteen chaperones per, I mean fifteen kids per chaperone. And then parents like love donating, so we could donate, they could donate the food and stuff. And then I know that people are worried about like unwanted guests coming in, but we had an idea that we could have like bracelets or wristbands when you first come in. And I don't think it would be a problem because everyone knows each other, so it's only like a small class, so everyone would know if there was someone there that wasn't in our grade. And we could have consent forms, too, that the parents have to sign for each kid. And what else? Let's see. If they're, it would be outside, and then it could start at like 10:00 p.m. They'd go until 6:00 in the morning, so it's like relay. And no one would be able to leave until 6:00 a.m. unless their parents are there to pick them up. And we could let the people that live around Miller know what's going on so that they're not like, I don't know, so that they are aware of what's going on. And then what else is there? We could have rookies playing on a projector throughout the night. And it could be games, like your relay, your race, and Crispy's and stuff like that. And then we had, and then we would have police detail, too, there to like flocking the entrance and stuff like that. And then we would have, so the main thing that we wanted to do was like, we went to student council camp, and we did this thing called Magic Notes, and they're really cute. You like write everyone notes, and you just get a bag, and you put the notes in their bag, and you just write nice things on them, like it was nice having you in English this year. So, we could have a table with pens and paper and stuff, and you just write a little note, and then we would put the paper bags around the track, and then like at the end of the night, you could put the notes in people's bags. You could have your name on them and stuff. So, that would be cute. And then what else is there? Oh, and then at the end, we could collect all the bags and give them out at the end. During the spring, we have the senior all-night celebration inside, though, and we could give them out there. So, we can like look back and read what people said. And then, yeah, so we wouldn't have like individual tents, just in case anything goes on, so we could have just big ones, so it's all open. And so, that's basically it. We want to have it on a Friday. We could do it Friday the 12th, and then the football team doesn't have a game that week, and then if not, they play over here Friday the 26th. But it could take place after the game. So, that was our Night on Miller idea. And then flocking, people have done that before. You just pay to flock people, and you put the flamingos on their lawns, and then you can, you can, if you don't want them, you don't have to pay, get them picked up, so it's not a big deal. But I don't know, I know it's been done for these years, and we want to do it for the month of October. So...
Jessica, hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good thanks. Now, this is just for the senior class?
Yes.
And how many students are in the senior class? A hundred and...
Eighteen, I think.
Hundred and...
One eighteen.
One eighteen.
I mean, we've had some kids come from the international program, so that may have been a little bit...
Brought it up a little bit, okay. Now, I think that we, as a school committee, our greatest concern is safety, which I'm sure you can understand that.
Yeah.
So, first of all, the date is October 11th. Is that what you said? Or the...
Oh, probably, yeah, the 12th. I'm re...
Which is...
Sorry to interrupt, but it would be the 26th of September. It's originally this week that you didn't get in. Yeah.
Okay. Could I ask, do you think that's enough time to get everything together? That's really only two weeks. Mr. Shukul...
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
Couple of things that, as we're finally talking about it, that I'm a little concerned about. A, it's, the 12th would definitely be out of the picture because that's Friday night. And then the 26th, that's still only two weeks away. And the issue is, is that we are using these fields right now as, you know, soccer fields, football fields, and all of that. And so, I'm concerned about the status of the field itself in an overnight. I'm also concerned that I think that I would need to touch base with the police department to see what the laws are outside, you know. I mean, I know we have an in-house celebration that we do in overnight, but I want to make sure that, and I don't know if we need to go through the town council to get approval as well, because this is like a party that you're doing outside, and you're going from 10 to 6 with movies and, you know, and sound and all of that stuff. So, those, it's, the idea of it is a phenomenal idea. There's no question about it, because it's a great team building. It's almost to the point where I would almost say that in the future, now that we're talking about it, the future idea would be that we would do the senior all-night at the beginning of the year in the school, and then at the end of the year, do it on Miller Field, because now you're, you know, your games are over, there's nobody, you know, it's a little different, it's warmer, there's things like that. But I just feel I needed, I should have checked with enforcement to also see what the, what our ordinance, you know, our ordinance laws are that state, are we able to do something like that outside? I don't know that complete answer on that.
I think for entertainment, live entertainment, I know you need a permit, but I'm not quite sure for...
For just...
For just a movie.
Okay, all right.
I think because of the noise, I think you do. I have concerns about this project, frankly. Serious concerns for two different neighborhoods. The neighborhood where you're proposing it, there are houses there, there are families there, and you're going to go all night, and they're going to be awake all night. And we're building a school in their neighborhood now, and so we're sort of adding to their misery. The second neighborhood is the neighborhood where I live, which is Yerel Beach. History tells me that when seniors get out of an all-night event, they go to Yerel Beach. And every time there's an all-night senior event, my neighborhood is awake at 6:00 on Saturday morning, because car doors, loud voices, a lot of laughing, and other things. So, I have serious concern about the overnight. I would have no problem if this was limited in time, but not overnight. It would be my intention tonight to vote against this. Yes, sir?
Hi, Annie, Michael. I read your proposal. I'd like to see an adult's name on this somewhere, one or two adults that would be there, that would be responsible, that if someone does show up, law enforcement, fire department, they can say, can I see Mr. Smith or Mr. Johnson or whoever?
Who are the volunteers?
Donovan Fruehl and Jenny Adams.
Jordan and Jordan.
They would be present?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to see that in writing, to, we know volunteers are great, but we also know the night of things, events, things come up, and they can't make it, and all of a sudden, the events go on with 80, 100, 150 kids and not enough chaperones. But if there's an adult, we can hold responsible, and basically, we can hold them responsible for the event. And could this, just throwing this out, I know the all-night's are fun, my kids do it, and the Peter Gobio walk, but that's in Jet Stadium away from any neighborhood, but could it be done during the day? You know, just something to throw out, just, you know, as an alternative plan to appease other committee members.
I mean, yeah, this is like, definitely not going to happen. I'm sure we could do it during the day.
Yeah, just to throw it out, just to start thinking outside the box. But that's my only concern, is to like to see an adult's name, two adults, really.
Ms. Sharkey?
Any, would you consider maybe speaking to CASA? Do you know CASA? CASA is a group of people who work with, on the health issues and protective issues. Mrs. Milano happens to be, I think Mr. Perrin's wife is also on the CASA. And really, what it is, it's an organization for the protection of children, and so, and I think they're, are they the ones that run the nighttime, the nighttime, you know, one at the end of the night, of the year? So, that maybe that organization might lend you some support, and they have a great reputation. I mean, of course, they have a great reputation, but I'm trying to say is that that would be a great support to present before us, and that maybe bring this back to us with the idea of maybe a little bit later date, where, and I know it gets cold, and it's been cold, but you guys can hack the coldness. And that maybe we can look at that a little further with just more security, and I understand that you're going to touch on the police, I understand that. But when you have somebody that's already organized, a large activity like that, like the CASA has, then that might be just something that will bolster you a little bit more.
But I can tell you that the volunteers, it's difficult to come by for a full, you know, full night.
Full night.
Sometimes you can break them up and have more. Actually, a quick question. I'm assuming you have a breathalyzer there as well?
Oh, yeah.
Before we breathalyze, I think we always do problems bad.
I think that would be a problem, you know, like dicking all night.
Yeah, right, and that it works for that night. Because I don't want to break your enthusiasm, because it really is, I mean...
It's a big undertaking, sure.
It is, it is. It's a very big undertaking. It sounds like it's an easy mark until you actually have to put it together, like, I'm even looking at the funding to get the big tents. Those tents are a lot of money. And so, I'm just, I'm just, okay, maybe you've already done that study on the cost factor of doing it as opposed to using it as a fundraiser. But I think I get it, that it's not just a fundraiser, it's a time for you all to be together as a class and enjoy each other. So, I hear that. So, that's, and that's important, and especially with all the transitioning and everything else that's going on. So, I just wanted to let you know that I think contacting some people that have strength as far as knowledge on putting something like this together will help you a little bit more, okay?
Mr. Holden?
Just, with logistically, were you planning on the lights being on all night? Have you thought that?
No, I don't think so.
You haven't? They wouldn't be, or you haven't thought about that far?
What? It'd probably be for the like walkie-around, and we'd do the lights on. Oh, with the drama movies and stuff.
Yeah, it's important. The safety purpose, I think, in need, okay? I mean, that track is a tough shape.
I know, just wondering, just, hi.
Ms. Sullivan?
I appreciate you coming here and pitching this idea to us. I think it takes a lot of guts to write a proposal like this and come and, you know, sit in front of us to do that. And I also want to be supportive of your enthusiasm and your ideas and your creativity. I do have concerns about the conditions of the field anyway, and then to have, you know, 118 students plus some volunteers and tents and so forth set up kind of in the middle of fall sports, you know, I just would be concerned about the upkeep and the maintenance of the field to have it during this season. So, and as well, to have two or three parents and other adults that are saying, yep, we're behind it, we're going to be there, safety and security is our, you know, front and center for us. So, those are a couple of things that I'd be looking to see as well.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the flocking request.
Second.
Second. Sorry, no, you've got it. Second by Mr. Perrin. Any discussion on flocking? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Generalists?
I tell you, it's lots of fun.
It's a little shocking when you're up there, you're like, somebody, that's a lot.
It is, it's so much fun. I hope you understand, anything, where we're coming from.
Yeah.
Okay, and like I said, we'll work with you.
Okay.
Okay? All right.
Thank you. Thank you.
I don't know if I should wait. Additionally, I'm here for Drama Society, too. We do a quick thing.
I think you should go right ahead.
All right, I'll go right, very much. So, first, the Drama Society, and then thank the school committee for its continued support. Ms. Phillips-Stock has approved a student-produced, student-directed show, and this will be the first time that we're doing something like this in over a decade. But we'd like to ask permission to hold a car wash on September 27th, that's a Saturday, from 9:00 to 12:00 in the morning, just out front in front of the incoming school. We don't have a check right now, just because we weren't able to get it in time, but it can be here by the next school committee meeting on the 22nd.
Did you already fill out the...
Yes, the forms are filled, but let's just take a check.
They did. I have the forms, I have the date blocked off of them, but they'll have a check at the next meeting. We could approve it at the next meeting. It will be in the use of buildings request, which will give them time.
Give them time. And as long as you have the check, you can assume that despite what you've seen tonight, we're usually approving this.
Yes.
Okay. You're not asking for permission to do the play, are you? You're just asking for permission to do the car wash?
Yes.
It's a fun play.
Okay.
I just wanted to let you guys know, talk about this drama production. It's a big endeavor that he's taken on, and it's basically, he's doing the whole thing. It's all going to be student-run, and we're hoping to get a lot of support, and people come out. Can you tell them the date of the drama production?
Yeah, October 9th and 10th, that's a Thursday, and a Friday at 7:00.
I think I read that anyone that tries out left pocket or takes a Monday.
Are you asking for yourself? Does it have to be a student?
Well, last year, I got to finally be a voice. Not successful at the high school. Maybe Michael will give me a shot.
And you'll be holding this at the high school?
Yes.
The Pauline Street High School auditorium?
Yes.
Right, Ms. Sharkey?
Yes, I, just as an inquiry, do we charge our students for car washes?
Custodial.
Because of the custodial factor. Correct? That's really basically the only reason that we charge.
Yeah, it's the only charge.
So, I just wanted to let you know, it's not to benefit anything, but because of the custodial part. Okay, so, sorry. Okay, just wanted to make sure that you understood that.
Yes.
It's not from our side, okay?
What's the name of the play that we're going to be putting on?
Darcy's Cinematic Life.
Darcy's Cinematic Life.
Relatively unheard of, but...
When will you be holding tryouts for the students?
This Thursday, actually.
This Thursday?
Yep.
It's got a lot of interest.
Yeah, yeah, a good amount. Pretty much everyone who's in Drama Society, you know, regular, will do it.
That's right.
Mr.?
I just add that I believe that this is all being orchestrated through an independent study as well, correct?
Yes.
So, he's doing an independent study, which we've allowed for some seniors to be able to participate in. He's chosen to do this as opposed to taking that, you know, that block where he couldn't. And he's working with Ms. Kalinda on that. So, we're happy to see that those approaches are happening, so...
Ms. Sharkey?
Yes, I'm going to step out of the block and put all of our students on the carpet here and ask them how it's been going as the new transition. And you can be honest, I'm not asking you to...
She's putting me on the spot.
Just like we were honest with you about the thing, you need to come back and be honest with us about how you feel things are rolling.
I definitely think that it's better than expected. I know that people were really doubtful coming into it, but I think it's working out better than I thought.
Yeah.
And the free period's, too. I thought that was going to be, I don't know, I thought it was a little risky letting people leave and not like within campus, but I think it's been, it's been great so far. You just sign out and sign back in, and it's fine.
Good.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, the building's perfect. I mean, I don't, I don't think that's a concern to many students at all, again, it was a high school once, and so. And we appreciate all of the like refurbishing and everything. I mean, any more of that, it's going to be better than the high school was.
I do get an agreement on that side of them.
Yeah, it's definitely, it's like kept up really nice. It looks really, it looks good. The gym's really nice, too.
Yeah, the gym looks awesome.
Yeah. And the walkrooms are like basically the same as before, and it's nice. I know, the locker rooms are kind of better than the rest. Yeah, we have sneakers in the locker room, yeah, it's nice. And now there's showers in the girls' locker room.
Yes, that's nice, yeah. Yeah, that's really nice.
I actually had a question about that. Well, not about the showers, but in the winter, you know, there's a parking lot in the back, are we going to be able to go through the back? Like, is there going to be an opening with a teacher there or something? To let us in?
Yes, we're working on the system so that we want to have basketball enter from the back, so that hockey can go from the front.
Oh, no. No.
Oh, you mean for students?
For the morning.
Oh, yes.
Currently, students are parking in the back, and they have to go around to the front.
Yeah, they need an entrance.
So, we will, we will work on something for when the weather's bad, so we're not walking around, and I see teachers, I promise.
All right, and even though we let you know things, you come to us, and if things don't work out or aren't working out, hey, you've got our ears, too.
Trust me, they come right to me.
Yeah, right there. That's the head ear.
They don't, they don't mind, and I'm, I've been very appreciative that they've come to me and talked to me about different things, and I'm happy to hear what we're hearing.
Well, I'm glad that you're happy.
Thank you.
Motion?
A motion for...
For the car wash?
No, we don't, no, we're not...
No, because we need the check.
We're gonna prove it next time.
It's, it's, it's.
And he doesn't need permission for the, the play, the car wash.
Was it yours?
You don't want to put the car wash, continue, just have a look.
We have, with all but told him it's okay. They're gonna get the paperwork before, to us before the car wash, so.
Okay.
We should be okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Thank you.
Thank you.
What's that?
I'm gonna ask everybody to please stand for a moment, Mary Alice is gonna speak.
This past month and this past week, we have lost some significant people from our, again, our school family. So I would like, um, to ask for just a moment of silence, and then I will say the names of the people that we have lost. Um, I'd like to a little bit apologize. The first person I'm going to speak is Ms. Kay Carr. Um, we kind of missed Kay's passing because it was put down as Lucille, and most people didn't know her as Lucille, they knew her as Kay. And, um, Ms. Carr, for twenty-five years, served as the, um, head of the school system. As we know, that all superintendent secretaries are really the lead people in the, um, school system. And, um, Ms. Carr, I, I met Ms. Carr when I tried to come into the school system many years ago. And believe me, she, um, held a very, very tight ship. Um, she was the champion of the superintendents that she functioned in. And she was a very, very important person to the community. Um, she was, um, Norma Gobio's predecessor, and, um, and she had, there is, she had impeccable order, and she knew her stuff, and to her family, I give our condolences. Um, also, um, a gentleman who I met when I very first came to Winthrop, and that was, um, Dr. Selly, and that's how he's known, he's known as Dr. Selly. And we lost him, um, about a week and a half ago. And, um, I remember coming into town and I only knew him as an optometrist. I didn't know that he actually was a biology teacher in the Winthrop school system for thirteen years. So I only knew him as Doc until later on, that I realized that, and my husband said, oh, yeah, I had, I had Doc for biology, and as he had many students. And, um, I just wanna say to his family, he was quite a gentleman. Um, you know, I can still hear his voice, and I wanna say our deepest condolences to all of his family. He had a wonderful family, and that was his pride, was his family and his grandchildren. And finally, I would like to say, um, this past week, um, David Reardon, who is our IT computer technician, lost his mother, so I would like to also give our condolences to David and his family.
Thank you, Mrs. Sharkey. Uh, public comment is next. Thank you. Next is minutes from August eighteenth.
Motion.
Motion by President Gill to approve the minutes.
Second.
Second by Ms. Sullivan. There's very discussion on the minutes. If not for vote, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Mrs. Polino and Mr. Perrin abstaining. Thank you. Next is, um, back to the superintendent for academics.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent, I just wanted.
I'm not the superintendent.
Oh, yeah, sorry. It's been a long summer. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, a couple of things I wanted to update you on. One, I know that at past meetings, uh, back when we were doing budget process and stuff that I had talked about, that I would like to bring a director of curriculum, instruction, and accountability, uh, staff person on. What I'd like to do is, what I am going to do is going to be posting that position. That position is gonna be replacing the salary of Martha Kelleher. That position will not go into effect until January, because Martha Kelleher is here through December. But I need to get started on that if I'm going to bring that in. And we will have a job posting on that. I finalized it, uh, pretty much today, the, the job description on it. One of the things that I really am taking a, a strong look at is the fact that where our weakest links are currently right now throughout the system is in our math and science areas. There's no question about it. Our ELA seems to, uh, improve and move in a direction that we'd like to see it to move, but at the, um, at the levels of our math and science, we're still, um, need a lot more support on that area. So I'll be looking for someone with that in, you know, direction, but also to handle, uh, curriculum and instruction, but also the accountability piece that I think is important for us in Winthrop. And I think this is a great opportunity for us to take full advantage and, um, move this forward. And, um, you know, so that's, that's where I'm at. I'll keep you updated on how that goes. Uh, we will do a, um, uh, search committee, and, um, I would certainly love to have somebody, uh, from the school committee, one or two, you know, however you want to do it. And I'm gonna, basically, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna have it be the principals and, you know, one other person on it, uh, and myself. So it'd be like five, so it could be a school committee, three principals, and myself on it to, to do the, the interviewing process on that. So that's where we're at on that. In regards to the iPads, the iPads came today, we finally received the iPads to the, um, uh, high school, uh, I mean, to our tech people. Uh, the teachers received their Macs as of today, 'cause tomorrow they have a full training on the Macs that's gonna be happening, and how they're gonna be doing the iPads. Um, as you are aware, we did have, um, as you talked about earlier, Mr. Reardon's mother passed away, so Mr. Reardon's been out. We did bring on a new person today in the technology, uh, department, which is going to be helping us, uh, get these out. We will have, uh, information going out to parents, uh, by next week, telling them about how the, the iPads are gonna be distributed. And I have spoken to Mr. Ruwako today and told him that I want the iPads out as quickly as possible. I'd like them out no later than the twenty-third, because we wanna get rolling on this and move. Understand that, you know, we, we just paid for them, we just sent them, we're moving as quickly as we can on it, but, um, we also don't wanna just get it out there and not have it be utilized to its full potential. So I know that Mr. Ruwako, Mr. Reardon, and, uh, Mr. Sacco, uh, who is our new, uh, higher, uh, no relation to the current Sacco family from Winthrop, but, um, who's come on for the, uh, uh, technology. And so we are working on those areas to get that out and get it corrected. I know that Mr. Ruwako and Mr. Reardon, as well as Mr. Sacco, are going to, uh, administrating training school with Apple to be able to push the apps into all of the iPads. And, um, we're very excited about it, we will get this out, and, uh, we're moving as quickly as we can.
Mr. Holden?
Um, thank you very much, uh, for rolling that out. And now, just thinking about it, um, are there gonna be guidelines? Uh, the school department owns these.
Correct.
Students are, like a textbook, using for the year and then returning them at the end of the June.
The, 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 what we are looking at and what other school districts do is that when you get, so an eighth grader's gonna get this iPad, uh, you know, right up through senior year. When they graduate is when they would turn them in. I'm not sure yet if we've decided if they turn them in at the end of every school year. That's one of the other things that we're trying to sit down and iron out, is the insurance policies, the, all of the letters that go in, because when the parent signs this, they have to agree to certain things on what they're doing with this iPad. Um, and the, the question is, is that we, we wanna have the option there for parents to purchase an insurance policy if they wish to, because if they don't and they lose something, then there's a, there's a fee that's has, that's there. And so those are the other things that we're trying to, uh, iron all that, so that we're good.
Yeah, I mean, that's the whole, I mean.
Right.
Student loses it, says, hey, I can't afford it now, you can't have a student in the classroom without it, and now we're in the kind of predicament here that.
Correct, correct.
Provide another one, and then another one, and another one.
And so that's where you have to have a good.
And then also the use of it, what the content going in there, are they open to be inspected at any time?
Correct, yes, they are, they are.
Get in the office tomorrow morning?
And, and the thing is, is that each student will still have their own Apple ID account, because they can put their information on that they want. But there will be firewalls and stuff that they, we can, we can control certain things up to a certain point of it. Um, but they will have, um, the, you know, it's their, it's their, their book, and they will utilize their book. And then when they turn that iPad back in to us, we just erase everything that's on that, and we're able to utilize it again.
I just have a couple of quick questions. At some point, are we gonna be replacing textbooks by loading them into?
At some point, we will be, yeah.
But that won't happen.
Because one of the things, right, one of the things that we're working on right now is what are the good common core that we can, you know, we can implement on it? Um, I don't know if you wanna say anything on it, I know that Miss Bellisstock has been working with the iPads and seeing the iPads in it, but I, I mean, I think we're just, we wanted to bring you up to speed and tell you that, yes, we're getting them out. One of the other things that we had to get, that we wanted to make sure we got, and those are coming in on the fifteenth, is the cases. 'Cause we want everything to be protected, and so we had to purchase a case for each iPad, and that's, you know, that was a different expense, but it's important that all of that's there as well so that, you know, they don't get broken, they don't get, you know, ruined. Um, but we, we also, as a district, we purchased an insurance policy on each, you know, on those. And then what we will do is we will offer the parents, if they want to, to have, you know, be a part of that insurance policy, otherwise, and then it's covered for them if any problems, otherwise they will be responsible.
And how, and how interactive is it gonna be with instructors? I mean, is it gonna be?
Well, it's.
The homework's gonna be able to.
It should be very interactive, and that's why we're doing the training now with our teachers.
We have, we have two trainings going on tomorrow, teachers doing new to math, and teachers who are very comfortable with math, who are actually gonna start looking at content and incorporating it into their classroom. And what they're, these group of twelve to fifteen teachers are gonna do is actually, I'm sending them some training on their own, and then they're gonna actually be doing my PD and my faculty meetings for the rest of the year. So we're gonna have teacher trainers training each other. Um, I'm surprised at how many of our teachers are already incorporating a lot of it in their classroom already. Um, the goal is by the time we get to the new school, is most of our curriculum will be through either iBook, some kind of online curriculum. Um, but this year, we're gonna roll out slowly, pilot a few courses. Um, but the teachers are extremely enthusiastic and knowledgeable, come to find out as to how to use them, so. It's, it's a step in the right direction, that's for sure.
Mrs. Sharkey?
Yeah, I, I just wanna support that. Um, I know my, um, my daughter and son-in-law are in a brand-new school in Wakefield, in the middle school, and they're also bringing in their iPads to their students also. And they had the opportunity, though, they got their, their iPads, or it's not an iPad, but whatever, I don't know which company they're using, and they had an opportunity to be trained through the summer. So, um, and as you said, they're, both of them are already incorporating their curriculum within this, um, the, the pad itself, and it's been wonderful. And, and I, I, for me, and I'm not a techie person, I've learned to be, I guess. Somewhat savvy, I guess, but I'm proud that I can do something. But, um, but what I'm saying is, it's so exciting, because I think that those of us who may have grandchildren or young children, the way that they can use technology is so far superior to what anybody can, that I ever thought would be a, have an ability to do. And, um, and I also wanna say that I think we're lucky that we have Mr. Ruwako and Mr. Reardon. I don't know Mr. Sacco, but, um, I know that they'll be working hand in hand and making sure everything is done correctly. And I know that Eileen has a lot, a lot, a lot of experience in technology, and that's to the betterment, especially for our high school.
One of the byproducts of these iPads is it's freeing up laptops. Which we have a lot of students, especially our special ed students, who are gonna be taking these laptops into classrooms and working on papers, college applications. So we're gonna have more resources by having everybody have an iPad and the teachers having Macs to free up laptop, laptop cards for kids to use in classrooms.
Oh, yeah.
Which I'm very excited about that, too.
I never thought that, uh, really, I, I'm sorry if I'm speaking out of tune.
No, are you finished?
No, I was just gonna say, being part of the system for many, many years, and seeing the lack of technology that we had in our school system, I think that probably, if I had to read my own school system, that would have to be at the very bottom. And to see this jump forward, but the creation of the two middle, uh, elementary schools, things came up because they were given at that time excellent technology. And now to see our high school and our middle school, part of our middle school, it's just exciting for me to see for the kids. I just, it's just amazing that things can happen so quickly.
Thank you, Mrs. Sharkey. Mr. Holden?
I, I don't know what safeguards we can implement, but I'm concerned you're gonna have seven hundred pretty much identical iPads walking around the school or walking out of the school. And when cell phones became big, they started getting stolen and missing, and I just, and my kids, primarily, kids go to all sports practices. I mean, the backpacks are all thrown together now, everyone's gonna pretty much know this, pretty much an iPad in every backpack now, and they're expensive. And it can't be the kids' fault if they go to practice, throw their bags down, and go for a five-mile run. What can we do to help kids? The, the real conscientious kids that go, I'd like to lock this up again, or what can I do? And just some thought as we go forward the next three weeks, what can we offer students to say? You can secure your laptop here. Um, other than, it's just gonna be in a backpack.
Right.
On the ground. And that's a concern.
Mr. Carr, we're not working on it, because much like with cell phones and wallets and everything else that kids leave in their bag, so we are working on some kind of, uh, plan for that. We definitely will be some, um, it's, it's, it'll be a little more challenging than a, than a, than a cellphone.
Right.
But we will work with the kids on that, absolutely, we agree, we, that's one of our biggest complaints.
I know, an app can come with it, where you can track it, look, no.
Yeah, there is, it's fine, iPad, yeah, they're absolutely.
Just as we go forward, just keep, build that into your conversation and planning.
Absolutely.
Mr. Masero?
I wanted to also let you know that we were working with Mr. Donley at the high school to create a Genius Bar of students so that, 'cause there are gonna always be issues where students or faculty or, you know, might have a problem with an iPad and stuff. So it's kinda one of those things that we've been, because Mr. Ruwako has been very clear, too, that, you know, this is a great initiative, but there's two people here, and I need help and all of that. So we've created, through Miss Bellisstock, to have support at the high school by creating our own Genius Bar. We've brought on another person to help with technology, because we are so underutilized in that when it comes to employing, which you're talking about of trying to get us to that tech area. So, um, I think that, um, we, we wanna just make sure that we do this correctly and make sure that all our steps and everything is set in place so that everybody knows what's going on, especially the parents, too, because, you know, now there are parents who've come to me and said to me, you know, what if I already have an iPad? And that's a good question, you know, if they already have an iPad and they wanna do it. I mean, those, we haven't talked about those things. So we're gonna come across a lot of, oh, I didn't think of those things. So that's why we have to, you know, work those through.
Ms. Holden?
I just wanna applaud, um, both of you for pushing us forward and finding the money for it. And I think that, um, you know, this goes back to when I first started on the school committee, I sent around an article about digital immigrants and digital natives. And children now, and high school students now are digital natives, and they grew up with this stuff. Their brain functions differently because they grew up with this stuff. And, you know, teachers are now catching up with students and, and meeting them where they're at. Um, and learning, you know, changing for the students' learning styles. And, you know, it's all about being in the twenty-first century, and so important that we, we meet the students where they're at in their, you know, neurological functioning and their processing of information, which is so different than how any of us learned, you know, with paper and pencil and a chalkboard. Um, you know, I was still using a typewriter in college, you know, so. Um, you know, I, I'm a digital immigrant as well, um, and I just think this is gonna be so great for the system and really great for our students.
Mr. Holden?
I just wanna say, um, paying for it, I just wanna thank the community. I mean, this is taxpayer money being spent on technology, and I wanna thank the community for, you know, the money they provide, the school department, the town, to, to us, and how we're spending it. Basically, thank you. It's not our money, it's your money.
I'm done.
Anybody else? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Always leading us in different directions. New directions, better directions.
Well, different, you might have got that right.
Subcommittee reports. Buildings and grounds, Ms. Sullivan?
We had a Buildings and Grounds Subcommittee meeting in the superintendent's office on the August twenty-fifth, um, a little more than a week before school opened officially. And, um, in attendance was myself, Superintendent Masero, um, Mr. Skomro, Steve Nicholson from the custodial staff at the high school, Mary Alice Sharkey, and Rich Sefuni, um, the Buildings and Grounds manager of the town. Um, there were a lot of things that came up in that meeting that I'm actually hoping are resolved now, so hopefully it's old news. There was, um, an inspection of the ventilation that was going to happen after our Subcommittee meeting. Some ceiling tiles were going to be replaced the next day. There was some, lots of, uh, water bubbler issues that were about to be replaced. So I don't really wanna report on all of that, because I'm guessing things are done, and I would like to hear if they're not at this point.
And I, and I have, I have some of that stuff in my report, so I'll be happy to do that.
So I'm gonna skip that a little bit, I thought it was a good meeting, and we, we did talk about how there was some anxiety about things not being completed, and there was a rush, and there was some private, um, assistants hired to finish some, some painting and so forth. Um, a couple of things that came out was that, um, some of the plumbing issues that are ongoing at, in the school's buildings, um, are a little bit harder to fix, because we don't have a town plumber, but we do have a town electrician, so when things, electrical things come up, it's much easier to manage that. So, um, when plumbing things come up, it's, it may be more delayed. So that was, I think, important to raise, and maybe something could be done about that ongoing in the next budget year, possibly. Um, and also, one quick thing that was discussed was about POs kind of lingering, um, in the superintendent's office, and that should not happen, and the PO should be addressed in a timely manner. And I believe everybody was in agreement with that.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, there were no votes taken. That's pretty much it, I, I think, as Ms. Masero said, he'll, he'll wrap up anything that wasn't at that meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Mr. Perrin?
I just have a question, uh, for the superintendent. Miller Field, I know we've already had our first game, but I, I, every year I ask the same questions. We always have the creatures on both sides inspected, I know they're getting older.
So the building inspector, and I had a meeting today with the building inspector and the facilities director. Um, we did replace, before Friday night's game, twelve boards. They're going around again through the stadium to see what else needs to be replaced, and we will replace those right away. It seems every year we're replacing about twenty-five to thirty, uh, boards on those, you know. Right, but, um, but no, we, we take care of that right away. on those, you know, right. But, but no, we take care of that right away.
I thought at one point we had an engineer walk through just to look, is that, would be catastrophic or something like that?
Right. But we do, I mean, we, when I say the building inspector, I mean the inspectional services, Mr. Leggie has been walking through on it, making sure that we're up to par, and fixing what we need to have fixed. We, the stadium right now is also being fine-tuned, looked at, it's in my report later, in about the possibility of maybe actually going that next step and maybe having a new stadium. So, that's something that we're also taking a look at.
So, I thought was that maybe we could have an engineer just look at those, because filter capacity, that would just be catastrophic.
Right, absolutely.
And, you know, maybe talk to the engineering firm that's working on our current school. I bet you that would be a good ol' laugh. I mean, it is a transitional issue.
Right. We do also have Gale Associates that's been taking a look at the current stadium.
That steel?
Yep.
And all the supports there.
We'll take care of that.
Thank you, Mr. Perrin. Any other questions on the building and grounds, comments? If not, we will move to the athletics Subcommittee. Mr. Holden?
Okay. Athletics Subcommittee was held this morning. Myself, Mr. Scomro, Ms. Sullivan, Ms. Messero, Mr. Lumberg, Mr. Goldville, Ms. Jarvis, and Ms. Flavin were present. The agenda was just talking about fall sports and any transitional issues. There were no issues. Athletic director said he was slightly behind on paperwork. He couldn't provide us numbers, which we understood. That's going to be, you know, fixed in the next week or two, we're updated on the financial part of it. Also, Ms. Eccles was not available to give us that information. But as far as all sports are up and running, there were no issues that were mentioned. I know Ms. Messero and others went down to the rink afterwards and had some conversation, which I'm sure will fill us in later. No votes were taken, and that was that. Before that, we had a policy Subcommittee meeting. Myself, Mr. Scomro, Ms. Sullivan, Ms. Messero, Mr. Perrin. The topic was mandatory background checks. Massachusetts has enacted a fingerprint background requirement, and into this policy, the Department of Criminal Justice Information Systems, Department of Ed and Secondary Education, and Department of Early Education and Care have all issued guidelines, and it's now up to the, to implement it. And conversations were had, and it's, there's a cost to it. New employees coming on to the school department, that'll be part of their requirement for applications, to have that fingerprint done at their expense. But we're having conversations on how to, our current employees, how we're going to fund that or pay that, or how we're going to go forward on that. So, conversations were held on that. We also need more information from the service provider that's going to do the fingerprinting. They're not done on site, although we're looking to see if it possibly can be done. But there's five zones that they can respond to to have this done. It's a two-year rollout. It will have to be done within two years. No votes were taken, and that was pretty much it.
Ms. Flavin?
Bright Beginnings on October 3rd, as long as they have the letter that states they need to be fingerprinted with the agency ID number, they can go to Bright Beginnings and pay for the fingerprinting. They're going to do a consistent fingerprinting.
So, they will be able to utilize that service for us?
As long as you have the paper that gets mailed to you that has the...
Right, we have that. Okay.
Do you know what the hours are, Melissa?
10 to 3.
That's a big help.
And do they get the receipt?
And they get the receipt from that, right there?
Unless it's a half-day, is it a half-day that day?
It's a Saturday.
It's a Saturday. So, it's a no-day.
October 3rd is a Friday.
Is it? It's the first weekend, so it has to be...
Oh, okay, so the 4th?
Yeah.
4th, 5th?
I'll double check with them tomorrow, but you guys...
I'll check.
Thank you.
And currently, it's, it's all new employees must be fingerprinted. Right now, it's current employees, we have a two-year rollout.
Anything else, Mr. Holden? Thank you, Mr. Holden. Mr. Superintendent, your report?
Thank you. First of all, I would like to take a minute to thank the Winter Public Schools' staff, parents, community. I have to tell you, it was an emotional week this week, getting open. But I am extremely, extremely proud of my employees. I've never been more prouder of the amount of work that the folks have done over the summer. I'm actually asking that Friday, we declared this Friday Custodial Appreciation Day for our custodians, for the amount of work that they did to get, help us get ready, as well as the DPW workers, the town services, on just the whole facilities itself. I've never been prouder and more excited to see kids. And it was interesting, when I would get into conversations with people, I would just be telling them what we're doing. And they would say to me, wow, you're so excited about this. And I was like, I never realized it. But it was because when you start to see work being done, you start to see, it becomes contagious. And, you know, I just, one of the best moments for me is I got to know a lot of people, not only in our custodial department, but in the Department of Public Works employees, the electricians, the folks who were coming, working on our front of the schools and stuff. And I'd come by and they'd say, John, what do you think? Does this look good? Yeah, oh, that looks good. Okay, good. And they'd be so proud. And that, to me, was a moment of walking, of seeing a partnership form between the town and the schools to really say, we're going to work together to beautify and make this work for our kids. And to see that come together, it was just, I can't describe you the feeling that I felt on the first day of school or leading up to that. It has, it's been an emotional roller coaster, needless to say. When there's never, you know, as we move along, there are always various issues. But I will tell you that there are your typical issues that are occurring right now, that are typical back-to-school issues that wouldn't matter where we were, if we were in our old buildings or this building, those are the typical things. There are some still logistic things that we're working out. For example, intercoms in some of the rooms in some of these buildings that we have, we finally got some walkthroughs to get us some prices so we can get those taken care of for safety reasons. There are, all of those types of things, as you heard, you know, trying to, where are the kids going to walk through this door if it's the winter? Things that we're coming to take a look at and say, okay, these are the problems as we move forward, and how are we going to resolve those issues. But then there's your usual problems. Scheduling can be a usual problem. Right now at the high school, we have some classes that are pretty full, overfull. And I've been working with Ms. Bellisstock to see how we're going to resolve that. The good news on some of the logistic problems of having eighth grade up there, which has been great, when you look at what we're offering eighth grade now with full-time world language and full-time physical education as part of six courses, and then on top of it, they have an elective. What that does is we were able to add those teachers into the building, but it also realized to us that we need to add even more in the world language area, because, at least part-time, so that we can take some of those classes that are at, you know, that have hit a 30 and reduce those. So, we're working on that right now, which we're happy to be able to do that. So, those are, some of those class issues are typical issues that will happen wherever we're at. And I'm leaving it in the hands of the high school to resolve those, and wherever they need that support, we will make sure that that support happens. At the two elementary schools, and it's, I'm going to call it the lower elementary and the intermediate school with the Arthur T. Cummings, the transitions, you know, have been very smooth. For example, at the William P. Gorman Fort Banks School, the staggered timing thus far has worked. At 8:02, we were done with traffic on Friday. At 8:06 today, we were done with traffic, and what slowed us down was the 8:15 entourage of bringing kindergarten kids for their first day, so they were all going up to the parking lot, and we couldn't get the cars out. But it was still 8:06. Wednesday will be a big test, because now it'll be kindergarten drop-off as well. But kindergarten dismissal, first grade dismissal, very smooth, because it's one grade. And then your second and third is your typical afternoon dismissal. But here again, Ms. Pearson done some great work with Ms. Grimes, and Ms. Grimes, as far as I'm concerned, you all know how I feel, unsung hero, heroine on all of this. We do have an unsung heroine and an unsung heroine. The unsung heroine is Ms. Grimes. The unsung hero is Vinnie Crossman.
Yes.
I have to tell you that Vinnie Crossman has gone over and above what he could do for this community with this whole project, being a member of that school building assistance committee, but really keeping me from jumping a few times, but also just being very resourceful on that. But anyway, in the morning, the wraparound program that this person has created for kids, that when kindergarten comes into school at quarter of eight, if you've got an older child, second or third, she has that program set up for siblings. For, at the end of the day, with the, for kids only, we've created the wraparound program for kindergarten kids in first grade to be able to go to this program while second and third get dismissed, and parents are able to pick up at the same time. And, you know, that took a lot of work and organization, and they've completed that. As far as the buses, the transportation, I think, has also helped us quite a bit, especially at the William P. Gorman Fort Banks School. Because we have, in the kindergarten, right now, we have 13 students being bused. And in first grade, I believe we have about close to 20 students. So, in the morning, that's about 33 students that will finally go on that bus. But in the afternoon, they have their own bus. Our biggest fill is the second and third grade. Our second and third grade has up to 60 students that are taking the bus to and from school. Because we, you know, I've, one area that I've taken some hits is that we had to create a five-day mandatory rule. We're providing a bus service free, but we can't, we had to make sure that folks, either we're going to take it all one-way, five days, they had to do it, or they couldn't be a part of it, because we just had so many students who wanted to participate on it. And so far, we've been successful. We've had some little issues, but we're trying to work those out as well. But 60 kids coming in and out. Now, one of our issues is still trying to solidify the second bus monitor. You may have seen me out there a couple of times, because I won't let first grade or somebody, you know, second grade, third grade be on a bus without a bus monitor. So, we've had to flip-flop. I know that Ms. Polino has come and helped us on a couple of occasions. We do have a couple more interviews tomorrow. We're hopeful. Ms. Polino has given a great idea to Ms. Grimes. They're also taking a look at it, that we may have some parents that might want to volunteer on a one-way. And I already had a person today who said he would step up in the mornings if that was the case. But we still want to get that taken care of, because it's better to not rely so much on volunteers, because what if they can't be there, and we want to have that. So, that's an issue that we're working on to resolve it, but that's working effectively. At the Cummings, Arthur T. Cummings School, students all coming in together, you know, in the morning, and then the separate dismissals. I will be honest, it's the one school that I haven't had the pleasure of really being there at the dismissal time yet to see how that's working, because I've been kind of focusing on both the high school and the, and the lower school. But it seems, I'm not hearing anything, so it seems to be, be working fine. There's enough inter, you know, timeframe, and our buses are coming in. One thing I will ask the community, and I've been very, trying to get people to realize, the half-circle out in front of the Cummings School that comes off of Pauline Street, at the end of the day and at the beginning of the day, that is for buses only, buses and pickup vans. We have people that want to come in there and park, because they figure they can pick up students and do it. We need our buses to be able to get in there. And so, we've been talking, people have been very nice about it. They'll move when I talk to them, but I just want people to be aware. Also, I also want to just say to people that we have a lot more students taking the buses this year. You need to be patient behind that school bus when you get behind a school bus, especially in the afternoons, because when we're dropping students off, we will not leave a student if they don't have a parent or guardian there to pick them up. And sometimes, if a parent is not there on time, it causes the rest of the traffic to back up, because we can't, you know, we're waiting to get the child off, and if not, we will keep the child on the bus and bring that child back to the school at that point. So, that has, today I was happy to see that that has cleaned up and moved. So, we, we're moving, we're working towards resolving any other issues that we're looking at. Case in point today, I was at the rink. I went to the meeting down there today. There's the issue of the rink. There's, there's a little section, when the rink always used to use the showers that were in the middle school locker room, because we never used the showers. Well, now it's the high school, and we've rechanged all those showers. It's the high school locker room on that. And so, the hockey rink cannot use those showers, because we're using those constantly, and we don't want adults mixing with students. So, we are looking at a compromise area that comes right into the locker room from the hockey rink. There's a hockey rink locker room, and then it actually exits right into the middle school, that we're possibly looking at those to be temporary showers. But if that's the case, then you have to shut those two doors down permanently, so that our kids from their locker room could never go in there and on the other side. So, those are the things that we're trying to iron out now as we work on it. But, you know, here again, we can sit there and say, oh, no, we have to, but it's about partnership, and we really are trying to work on that. You know, we're bringing, we're bringing sections of the, departments together to talk about how we're going to resolve these things and see what's best for it. That, that has questions and complications on both sides that will also go to the school building assistance committee, and they'll be discussing that at next week's meeting as well. So, but those are some of the things that we're trying to work out. As far as, you know, students, you heard it tonight from the, you know, the high school students, some of the students, how they feel. The elementaries, I feel, went smoother, because the kids, really, for the most part, at the William P. Gorman School, they never left. So, they don't know any other difference. And the only class that was coming back was the kids coming to the seventh grade, and so that they came back. And so, that's, that was the opening of the schools. Tomorrow, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I was going to say tomorrow, just so that everybody knows, although this is being taped, so it'll be on after that. Tomorrow, there's no school for students, but there is professional development for staff. And it'll be my first time to actually have a chance to talk to my staff as a whole, whereas I didn't do that last Tuesday, because I felt it was more important for my staff to be in their building, to have that time with their principals and get those areas out. So, that'll be something that we'll be doing tomorrow, and then Wednesday we'll be back on, in full gear.
You said you hadn't seen dismissal at the Arthur T. Cummings?
Correct.
School. All three of my children are in that school now, and I cannot speak to the dismissal for the school buses. I don't see that side. But the school street dismissal has been no problem whatsoever. The, the early grades get out at 2:25. 20 minutes later, the fifth and sixth grader grades get out what used to be the fifth grade door over by Herman Street. It seems to be going very, very smoothly, no problem. Little, there's a few extra cars around, and I think there's logical explanation as to why that is reduced parking over at the, behind the libraries, the teachers who used to park over there and now down the basketball courts. So, there's a few more cars parked, but so far it hasn't been a problem at all. I did want to say, Mr. Superintendent, that the word that I have heard repeatedly to describe Mr. Sherman's new music room is cool. Go figure. And that's from the students who are using it.
Good to hear.
Several students have told me that the music room, I've asked them, and they've said, oh, it's cool.
Well, that's a credit to Mr. Sherman that he made. He took a room and turned it into a facility that's, as well as all of these teachers have done that, which has been great.
Yes. And having Spanish as a full-time world language, and especially bringing it down to the Cummings School, several parents have said how pleasantly surprised they have been when their student comes home and says, oh, I'm taking Spanish. They didn't know, and they are so pleased that their child is now taking Spanish in the elementary grade. So, down to, down to fourth grade here at the Cummings School. So, there are some very pleasant surprises, I think, that we parents. My seventh-grade daughter, who left the Pauline Street Middle School and came back to the Cummings School, no complaints. Dad, I liked going to school there. What's the problem? My sixth-grader is disappointed that she doesn't have a locker this year, because she was expecting to be at the middle school and get a locker. If that's her only complaint, I'm a happy man.
If I may, I got confronted by two six- If I may, I, I got confronted by two sixth graders at my wife's studio, um, who were, talked to me about the fact of, you know, we, we're not gonna get any lockers. And I said, "Well, you are, but in two years. Um, you're gonna get a brand-new middle high school, and I feel that right now, that I think you can, you can handle that, and, you know, we'll, we'll move in that direction." And they seemed to be okay after that. But I understood, but it's a, you know, it's a change.
And the one more thing I wanna add, that I've heard, um, about the Cummings School is, gee, what a great new principal we have in there. Mr. Harity has hit it off very nicely with his students right away. Mr. Holden, you wanted to say something?
Um, just go back to the shower, now, with the shower situation, and you said adults. Are these showers gonna be open to the adult league at night, for them to go in?
If it's, if this is a temporary, so, if they, if they utilize what, it's, it's harder to, to explain than to visualize. They would never interact at all with going into any part of the middle school at all, because those doors would be shut permanently.
When you say shut, like concrete shut, or just someone with a key is gonna lock it?
It would be, well, we can determine either way on it. I mean, it's not concrete shut, it would be locked shut right now. Um, but, so what happens is, that door, where that current locker room is, for the hockey locker room, it would walk right into a shower, and they only need one egress out, because it's a shower. So they don't need to utilize those other two doors.
They can go right back up through the rink.
Right. Right. That's, that's what is up for discussion right now, on that. Um, the, the real goal, of course, is that the hot, the rink would like to get, they'd like to build new, um, what do you call it, uh, locker rooms.
Locker rooms.
That's, you know, that's, that's their goal on it. And the thing is, is that, we do have to take a look at that, because, yes, in two years, for these two years, you know, we're, we're there. But in two years from now, what happens to the facility of the school itself, and what happens when, if we are playing hockey there and stuff? The other part is, is that we're looking at, you know, both girls' and boys' hockey, because you've gotta make sure that you've got the facilities that are gonna adequately be acceptable for both. Um, right now, you have showers that are being utilized, that there are no showers being utilized at all for anybody at the rink.
And my other, um, it's a concern, um, crossing guards. Where do we have crossing guards?
So, we had crossing guard, and that's a, you know, Mr. Holden, I haven't even looked at that, as, but it's a very good point.
Pauline Street.
Pauline Street, we had one right over by Nix, and then we had a crossing guard last year that I had set up over by the, when you come in over the end of Pauline, and, um, what is it, Pleasant?
Walden.
Yeah, Pleasant and Pauline, they're supposed to have a crossing over there, and then we had a crossing over down by the William P. Gorman School, when you're coming up the, um,
By Elmont.
Elmont. That's a crossing guard there. Uh, but I would be very happy to look at other areas that we need.
It seems like we definitely need two, really. Uh, by the basketball courts.
Yes.
On Walden. There's so many more kids now running back, and cars apart, up and down both sides of Walden, and...
I thought we had moved somebody over there last year to it, but I agree.
We, we
We tried.
Had a gentleman down there briefly.
Okay.
But only briefly.
All right, I'll take a look at that.
And then also, I don't recall one being a Pleasant-Pauline, because
Well, last year, we had gotten a request for it, and I had put in for it, to have somebody there, because there was a
Was it Barletton, or Woodside, but not Pleasant?
Yes.
Was that the lights?
Is that the lights?
And the other one, I think, is Pauline and Walden, 'cause that's where kids coming out of high school are walking up that way, and kids coming out of the Cummings are going that way, and that, at that intersection.
Right.
So, I, you know.
Yep.
And now, high school is dismissed. Uh, there's a lot of high school students getting out, and people are leaving from the Cummings School in their cars, and
Right.
A lot of
So we, we'll, we'll iron those out on that.
But, um, Mrs. Bossy, who is our crossing guard by Nix, coming over towards the E.B. Newton, always does a wonderful job there. She's great.
Um, if I may, I'd like to just go on a couple of things.
Are you gonna, going to transition, or are you?
Not yet. No, I still have a few more items on the thing. First of all, with the high school, just wanted to let you know that on Thursday night, you wanna turn on Channel Five. Apparently, the high school, the excitement of the high school football team, uh, has come back down by thirty points, or twenty-five points, caused Mike Lynch to give them the High Five Award. So they're going to be recognized, they're gonna be interviewed tomorrow, and they will be, uh,
Oh, that's great.
On for Thursday.
Have a song, is correct.
Yes, which made it even better.
Yeah.
Which side were you sitting on?
I'm always on the Winthrop side. I had my Winthrop Vikings shirt on proudly. But, um, yes, no, it was a, it was a heck of a day in that ninety-degree day. Um, one of the things that I do wanna talk to you about, and just give you some really phenomenal news, um, and this is something that, uh, I'll be meeting with the scholarship committee in a couple of weeks, but as you all know, that I had spoken to you before about Mr. Facella, Mr. and Mrs. Facella, Paul and Norma Facella, who for many, many years, uh, gave multiple scholarships to our students in the amounts of five thousand dollars. Uh, this past year, we got two five thousand dollars. Um, when I first came on, Norma had passed away three years ago, and then last year, Mr. Facella, um, had passed, oh, this year, back in, I believe in June, uh, in, in the winter, had passed away. Uh, before that, as I have told you before, I'd met with Mr. Facella, uh, at his home with Ms. Conlon, uh, Ms. Bertino, uh, and, um, we had met to talk about, and, and Ms. Mail, and we had talked about, uh, he said to me, "I would like to leave a nice, solid, uh, endowment, and I want the interest of that to go to scholarships." And we were, like, blown away by that, and we were, like, very thankful about that. And we had also talked about the possibility of, could any of, or some of that money be utilized for anything else, you know, possibly AP testing, or maybe even some athletic, uh, areas. And he said, "Well, he'd like to think on that." Um, and then we, we touched base, and then that was really it. We were very thankful for that, and things went on. Uh, last week, I met with, um, the, his nephew, as well as, um, his accountant, who's been his accountant for quite some time, and they are finalizing all of the details. But, um, they will be sending me the final stuff. But Mr. Facella has, um, endowed six and a half million dollars to the town of Winthrop for scholarship purposes.
Six and a half million dollars.
Amazing.
This, the interest rate on this, they are estimating is to be around three hundred thousand dollars a year for scholarships.
Holy cow.
Um, that is, folks, is a gift to this community that will forever be strong for our, you know, for those students who will be able to take advantage of that. One of the reasons why we're calling this scholarship committee together is because one of the things that they talked to me about is that they would like to see us create what's gonna be the criteria. You know, how does this all gonna work, and how's it gonna roll out? His nephew, um, was very excited about it. Uh, Mr. Facella and Mrs. Facella did not have children. Um, so they, you know, they gave it to their family, but this was their school. This was their, he, Paul always stated, and what he was very adamant about to me was, "Winthrop was my home, I grew up on Shirley Street, I had nothing when I grew up. Winthrop was my life, my high school was everything that it meant to me, and I wanna always give back, because I wanna see kids be successful, and I want them to go on to college and be successful about it." Uh, one of the things that we've talked about, as we'll get into all of that, that one, his nephew would like to see, is, he's like, "What about a full boat? Could we give a full boat to somebody? You know, wouldn't that be great?" And we talked about how that would work out over a period of time, it would be four, and all that. So there, there's some great stuff that we're gonna work out on those things. Now, the key question that they were working and talking to me about was, they were wondering, do they need to go with a third party? Do they need to have, uh, like, possibly Boston Foundation, or somebody, so that they'll handle and send out the monies? We would still create within our scholarship committee how this criteria's gonna go, or do they wanna take it, and then they send it to the town, and the town, you know, they send the interest rate to the town, and we, we cut it. So we're in those discussions with them right now. And the other big discussion is, when will this go into effect? And I have asked them, if at all possible, I'd like to get this to kick off, you know, this year, because I think it's a great year for that to happen.
I was just wondering what the cost would be to manage that, I mean, if it's
They're, they're gonna
Scholarship money.
They're, they're gonna take, they're, that's, it's a good question. I don't know the final detail on, what they were coming up to me, to talk to me about was, what, you know, what was our ideas, and how, what, what are the other options, whether or not we go through a third party, or not go through the third party, and, and stuff like that. Um, the goal is, though, is all that money has to be spent, the interest all has to be spent within that year for purposes, and then the next year, you, you get stuff. The other key component is, is she said to me, "Oh, you do have some money, though, each year, that you can put towards AP testing and to athletic equipment."
Really?
So it's a percentage of the certain things, so she's sending me that interest. So, I just wanted to, you know, in, I, I talked to them and told them that at some point, I will come back to the school committee as we move into the new building, and talk about maybe a little area, little space that we can do in, in remembrance of Norma and Paul, um, whether it's a, you know, a bench or something. But I want us to think about that, and to think, because, you know, the, when I talked to them, one of the things I said is, "Wow, that's, that's a real game changer," you know, to a community. They said, "You bet." And that's a beautiful thing that he's done, and, and what he's allowing kids to have that opportunity, so. So we'll be working with, um, the scholarship committee and, and, and trying to set that criteria, because their biggest fear, and I understood that, was that they wanna make sure that there's a criteria in it, so that just because you're this person, that means you get, no, they wanna know what that is. And we, we will take a look at what we currently have at the high school and stuff, so that we can look at those current criterias and say, "Oh, we've already had this in place, now what we're doing is maybe adding this funding to it." So.
Sure.
I'm overwhelmed.
Yeah.
I can't even put my head around that kind of money, and that kind of, um, caring and charity, 'cause it is a charity, even though I know that it's not set up for that purpose. Um, you know, sometimes you wish that they were here for us to say, "Thank you." Um, I know that, knowing you, John, I'm sure you did that before you even, you know, do that. But that's just a phenomenal amount of money, and to donate that to, I think, the most precious thing we have is our kids. Um, it's just
If I may, I will, I would like to say, um, that Mrs. Rona Mail was very, um, helpful, and she, she worked with Paul quite a bit, always would send Paul a thank yous and everything, and made sure that, um, you know, how he felt. And, and as well as Annette Bertino. Annette Bertino was a huge input on this as well. She, you know, they were the scholarship committee, they always made sure, and so I have to thank them as well.
Well, both of them are, that's who they are.
Right.
Both. And that, and well, that's, that's who they are. But thank you to everyone.
So, contagious as it gets, I have to also tell you that Mr. Cash, Colin Cash, who, um, has also donated ten thousand dollars to the Winthrop sixth and seventh grade school, uh, because he's got a real love for middle school, um, had a strong love for Mr. Burke, uh, Ms. Kelleher, and the work that they did with staff in the past, has donated, uh, this year, uh, contacted Ms. Kelleher again, and said, "I'd like to do this again, and I would like to have it for kids for, for, when you talk about technology, buy another set of Chromebooks," uh, so that our kids at the other level, because one of the things that we're trying to do is not miss out on the other levels of what we need for technology as well. Um, so, that has been, um, a gift that just came in. Uh, in the past, we've kept it anonymous. This time, I had said, "Jeez, I'd really like to say it," and I was given permission to do so. Um, we're very appreciative of that, um, and that's, that's very helpful in that. Um, speaking of technology, I just want you to know that at the Arthur T. Cummings School, every room by October will have a smart board in the room now, so all classes will. And at the William P. Gorman School, we have bought what they call Mobis, and these are document cameras that are incredible Mobis, that you can do them from anywhere, and all teachers will have those, not just a classroom here or this. Every teacher, including our specialist, will have those. Uh, so, we're very excited about that, and that's the training that they're doing tomorrow at the William P. Gorman School on that. Um, I had so much stuff tonight, 'cause I was just so excited about everything that's going on. The air quality, just so that you know, I did meet with Mike Feeney last week, Mike Feeney, Al Legui, um, Rich, uh, Sefuni, myself, we did a walkthrough of the building. Um, all the ceiling tiles were replaced, all of the stuff on the recommendation list, for the most part, all, uh, areas have been completed. Mike Feeney was very pleased with the amount of work that we've done. Uh, said to me that he will send out, Mike Feeney and myself are going to be, uh, meeting with the Board of Health on September twenty-third, as well as Al Legui, just to go over, um, all of the things, break the, the stuff down from the recommendations, what has been done, what has been completed. Uh, Ms. Bellistock, uh, the custodial staff have worked, you know, tirelessly to make sure that those things have been accomplished. And, um, we are going to have it, uh, tested, once the heating system goes on. Uh, we are looking at doing our own. I know that I, I, you had asked the question before, and, uh, Mr. Flanagan had told me that Chief Flanagan, yes, we would have those in the building, so that we could, um, check on any CO, um, stuff. So, um, you know, that was a good relief to see that that was being taken care of. And I think that that's it for now.
Just going on the ventilation
Yes.
cooling and heating. Um, the interior rooms that don't have windows, or those two new rooms that were built in the cafeteria, um...
Those windows are having, we're, we're, I met with Mr. Sefuni on that last week, because those windows, they should've been done by then, but they weren't. But those are having, um, exhaust fans put into the window, so that we can pull the air out and pull it in.
'Cause I know they're using fans, some fans were put in that room, just to move the air around.
Correct.
As a process, they're gonna take care of it.
Right. And I believe that's supposed to be done Wednesday.
Yes.
So.
And I just wanna echo what, uh, Ann Mahoney said earlier, just better than expected. You know, that's, I
Thank you, Bill.
Are the drinking fountains in at the high school?
Yes.
Yes.
They're all in.
The water bottle?
All the water faun-, and we have one on each floor, that you actually can bring your water bottle, or your water thing right there, and it pours the water right in. So we're very excited. Ms., Ms., Ms. Bellistock was more excited about those bubblers.
I can, I can, can you tell? The best thing that happened at school was a water bottle.
And, and people were very happy to see that.
Yeah, they're very
I mean, you know, I just, I, it's, I'm just so happy that we have those things, and I'm, part of me is like, "Why haven't we had those things?" You know, and, and, and that part, I look at and say, "Jeez, you know, that's just not right." And so I'm happy that we have that, and the maintenance, and we're doing that. And we're talking about now, as you spoke about earlier, about Miller Field, we're talking about, if we, we need to also turn that around over in that area, too, to show that we appreciate and we need to maintain that stuff, especially if we're working on, we're working hard to get a new stadium, and to try to create that, we have to make sure that we take care of those things. So.
Mrs. Sharkey?
Yes, I just would like, um, I know that the superintendent and I had briefly mentioned that the possibility of needing, um, a halftime social studies person to
We, 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 we've got another solution on that, that we may resolve that, on that. So I've talked to Ms. Bellistock on that.
All right. And also, um, a business finance person
Yep.
That, um, we're looking at
We have posted for a, a, um, part-time, a business finance person, as you saw.
Yes.
Um, and we've gotten, how many resumes in?
Uh, five.
Five resumes in. We're gonna, Mr. Gordon is taking a look at those.
Okay.
And, um, we're, we're gonna see what, you know, how it's
Are we going to have a team to, uh...
I, I, I would say we'll talk to, we'll figure out how we wanna do it on it.
Okay, all right.
See how the role
Because is that final approval
Yes.
Our final?
Yes, it is.
Right.
That is your final approval?
Yes, I just wanna, to make sure.
Good point. I make the recommendation, and then you make the decision.
Right. Um, the final thing, I just, very, 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 I know I've been yapping too much tonight.
No.
I just wanted to say, I know that our community has always been challenging, and rightfully so, the cleanliness of our buildings, and to keep maintaining them, so that we don't have to keep going back, and going back, and going back. I think that anyone who went through our buildings, um, even right now, starting right now, they would be so impressed with all of the buildings. The two elementary schools were just excellent, going through it, everything Everything was, I, as perfect as I think it could be. Classrooms were beautiful, everything was maintained well. And I'm just saying, I, I think our citizens, if they wanted, had an opportunity to go through, they would have been impressed and, and I know that we've pledged that we will continue to make our buildings or continue to upkeep our buildings as they are and even for the, the new high school. So again, I know we've been complimenting our custodians, but I think we've been looking at more the high school.
Oh, no, all of them. That's why it's a custodial appreciation.
District wide.
Right. It's a custodial appreciation.
They, you know, it's just been wonderful and I thank.
I mean, as I say.
And I thank you too, John, because I know that you've taken a lot of pressure from everybody and I want to say.
Well, in regards.
In particular.
Thank you. In regards to the maintenance, I've, I, in my letter that I sent to the staff and I send it to the community, you know, I want every day to look like the first day.
Yeah.
That's important, so. In regards to transition.
I can't believe you have more.
I would know what I would like to say in regards to transition.
I hope my father's not watching.
I hope so too. Well, you can tell him he doesn't have to, it's videotaped. I would like to ask you to remove that off because I'd like to us to not have to transition anymore. Let's just be the new school year and let's move forward. And then we may bring that back later when we, we can call it school building.
Two years from now.
Right, as we transition back into the other thing. But I think that that, you know.
Ms. Ames.
Under, under personnel, if, if I may go on. We did have some appointees. We had John Arizoni, who's an 8th grade teacher for Zed, Christopher Beckbold, grade social studies, 8th grade social studies teacher, Joseph Chapman is a math teacher at Winthrop High School, Lauren Clark Otobu, grade 5 teacher at the Cummings, Brittany Daly, drama teacher at the Cummings, Elizabeth Donovan is our physical therapist, therapy assistant, we're happy to have her back, she was with us before. Clark Dumart is an athletic trainer. We're very excited to bring on an athletic trainer full-time as opposed to having, using the services and stuff, we feel that that's going to be much more beneficial for our students. Holly Goncalves, academic support teacher at the William P. Gorman. There's another initiative that Ms. Pearson was able to instrument, you know, include for that five-day rotation. That's another beauty for you folks who have a child at, from pre-K through 2, knowing, or 3, knowing Jim is every Thursday. Makes life a lot easier for a parent of a first grader. Mary Hall is our grade 1 inclusion specialist. Miguel Maravi, grade 8 Spanish teacher, who I'm hearing the kids just adore. Adam Ol, Ol, Olniki, chemistry forensic teacher. Douglas Rossette, special ed teacher. Joseph Sacco, I said earlier, our PC technical support. And Michael Witten, our Spanish teacher, Winthrop High School. We did have one resignation. Our high school nurse has decided to not continue with Winthrop Public Schools and has moved on. The, we have no retirements at this time. I know there are some out there talking, but there are no official retirements. And we did have a couple of postings. I'm looking for that right now. Where I had, oh, here it is, right there. We did post two ESP positions, that, those have not yet been filled. That's for the Arthur T. Cummings School. And you saw the posting here for the IT technician, although we've already hired that person since our last meeting. We had a long-term sub for grade 5 because we had a teacher that had to go out on a leave for a little while. And then the drama teacher, the 8th grade social studies, all of these positions have been filled thus far that I just talked about. We've posted lead teacher positions and that's it currently. And I don't have any leaves at this point. So I'm done.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Yes.
Any questions or comments for the superintendent at this time? If not, we shall move to the warrants. We have in our package warrant, SVW15-3 in the amount of $67,726.86. Motion by President Gill. Second by Mrs. Polino. Any questions on the warrant? Now we shall vote. On favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? It's unanimous. Thank you. I do have a question. We just voted on it, but go ahead.
No, it's going back, I know we're taking transition off the docket. Was there any monies left over in transition or what happens with the funding that was in transition if there was any or did they?
So there is, there is. I mean, on the transition right now, we, we, we still have to finalize how much we've spent because there are some items, over the last month, I haven't been back at school building assistance, so I've been taking, to get things done, I've had to itemize what's, what I consider swing space and what that.
You can let us know next meeting. I didn't want, I just.
Right. I, I'll be able to give you the rundown on it, but we've, we've, well within our amounts that we were authorized by the city, oh, by the town, so.
Okay.
But that, that's not school committee money.
Right.
It's school building assistance.
School building assistance.
That's town council money.
Right.
That's not.
For the use of transitional purposes, right?
For swing space, correct.
Right, yeah.
But they're the ones who authorize whatever is spent.
Next is the payroll warrant. Motion. In the date of July 30th, 2014, in the amount of $135,026.98. We have a motion from President Gill, second by Mrs. Sharkey. Questions or comments on the payroll warrant? We shall vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry. All opposed? Abstentions? Abstained? Thank you. Next is the Viking Pride Foundation gift. We have a proposal from Viking Pride Foundation. You all have copies of it and there are eight different categories. First one has been withdrawn for the time being and so we, tonight we are looking at numbers 2 through 8. Number 1 has been Viking Pride has asked us to hold off on taking action on the first issue. Would anybody like to go through these?
I think it would be important.
The second issue is for, these are, these are, Viking Pride Foundation has offered to give a certain amount of money to the school department for specific items. The one labeled number 2 is for $11,200 for athletic equipment. $5,000 to replace broken or end-of-useful-life soccer nets. $3,000 to replace broken and end-of-life football headsets. $2,000 to purchase a tennis ball launching machine. $1,200 to replace broken or end-of-life track hurdles. I should say that most, if not all, of this money is a result of the, what should I call it, the celebration at Winthrop.
The year.
The ghost of Valhalla.
Winthrop High School goes to Valhalla, the, the Main Street, old Main Street, Winthrop High School. And that's where Viking Pride identifies most of this money is coming from. Would the committee like me to go on and we'll vote on these items as well?
Yes.
Thank you. Item number 3 on the list is $10,000 for teacher transition fast distribution grants. The board, and the board is Viking Pride Board, understands the stresses placed on classroom teachers during the transition. Items may get lost, a classroom move may usher new challenges and a building with more students may present different obstacles. We would like to help minimize that impact with an easy-to-apply online grant program. Teachers will apply in mid-September and grants will be awarded in late September. To avoid a prolonged purchase order process, Viking Pride Foundation will handle the ordering and goods will be delivered directly to the schools in a timely manner. All teachers, district-wide, will be eligible to submit requests as all schools were impacted. Item number 4 is $9,000. Creation of a co-curricular tutoring program. Many studies prove that participation in student activities boosts, boosts academic performance and reduce the dropout rate. Viking Pride Foundation would like to offer three $3,000 per-season grants for a teacher to create a tutoring program for students involved in co-curricular activities. Students struggling in certain areas or those who are at risk of being ineligible for co-curriculums due to grades would be referred to the program by coaches, advisors and/or staff. Viking Pride Foundation would pay for the piloting of this, of the program this year with the hope that it was determined to be worthwhile for continued school department Item number 5 is $2,500. Locker room upgrades, co-curricular transition. Viking Pride Foundation has purchased items to assist with locker room upgrades at the high school in Miller Field. The high school being, of course, the Pauline Street High School. This donation also includes a small amount set aside for transition-related issues that may affect co-curriculums and athletics. Number 6, $2,500. Winthrop High School Student Council Grants. Viking Pride Foundation would like to support student-led programs coordinated by the Winthrop High School Student Council. Similar to the teacher grants system, it will be an easy process for them to submit requests. Item number 7 is $2,000. High school teacher appreciation. The Board of Directors would like to work with the High School Student Council to plan Winthrop High School teacher appreciation initiatives throughout the year. The last item, number 8, is $2,000 for a poster machine. Upon request of Principal Eileen Pearson, Viking Pride Foundation will partner with the Gorman Ford Banks PTO in purchasing a poster machine. Viking Pride Foundation is thrilled with the success of our most recent event. We look forward to distributing these proceeds from the event back to the students and teachers of the Winthrop School Department to assist you in making these years of transition stress free, enjoyable, and most importantly, full of learning. Sincerely, Vincent Crossman, Chairman, Viking Pride Foundation. I make a motion to approve items 2 through 8 on this list.
Second?
Second by President Gill. Are there any questions or discussions on that?
Just to say how appreciative we are to Viking Pride for all their efforts and this donation. It's been very helpful.
Mr. President?
And I, I echo that for their ongoing efforts over the years and for the success of the Valhalla event, that was unbelievable.
They should tear down a high school every year.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
No, don't do that.
No. Please don't.
Ms. Sullivan?
I would just like to thank Viking Pride as well and the, the donation is not only generous, but it's, it's very thoughtful and the ideas that they came up with are really innovative and I think the teachers will be really excited to hear about them and I just really hope everyone participates and has the, takes the opportunity.
Ms. Sharkey?
I was just gonna say, that's $40,000 that are given, that is given to our teachers and students and it's, it's just a great amount of money and it's the way that Viking Pride has always looked at our system is to give it the support that it needs, where it needs it. And they always look to see and I thank them very much also.
Mrs. Polino?
My very first Winthrop event was the Viking Pride Jimmy Allenhurst dinner.
Yeah.
And I never realized how strong the foundation could be and they have not lost any of its money. And it just gets carried every year with the town and the help and all the ideas that they have. It's just amazing that the board can come up with such great ideas. So very nice one. Very first one.
I too want to thank Viking Pride Foundation and is there something we can maybe put in the transcript and thank them for these gifts and maybe list what they're doing and more or less let the community know again, it's the community money that's been given or donated to Viking Pride and to thank the community for these funds.
So the first thing we'll do is we'll post it on the web, on our website as well as Facebook, but I do like the idea of putting something in the newspaper on that. I think it's a great idea.
You know, it is, it is money, as you say, Mr. Holden, that the citizens of Winthrop have given to Viking Pride Foundation, but it's also all of the work that Viking Pride Foundation does to get that money. The different events to raise funds, the thought that they put in to all of these ideas as Mrs. Sharkey said. I don't know everybody on the board. I do know some, some of the members and Mr. Crossman, as you said, Mr. Superintendent, the unsung heir of the transition and certainly as the, as the chairperson of the Viking Pride Foundation. I know I accosted the poor fellow as he was, happened to be walking by my house the other day and he didn't mind. He could stand and talk with me about, about Viking Pride and what they're doing and I appreciate that. And it, it was Vinnie who gave me the tour of the locker room facility to show me what the issues were down here. I had never gone to school there. Vinnie was very familiar with me and he gave me the tour and explained what the issues were that needed to be corrected. And he's, he's almost in as many places as you are, sir, and.
He is, he does get around a lot.
He's more of these. I just can't thank him and Mrs. Gagnon, Ms. Dickinsonsella, Mr. Deeb. I'm sorry, I don't know all of the people on the board, but for all the work that they do, very much appreciated. And so we have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Next is use of buildings and grounds. And we have two. I mentioned earlier that we have, new this evening, we have a request from the town clerk for use of the Cummings School cafeteria on November 3rd. She had already requested and gotten approval for November 4th, which is a voting day. She just wants to be able to set up the evening before, so she's got a request for that. And it's, she did not ask to have it come tonight. I asked Ms. Ames if she would bring it tonight because I didn't want the town clerk to be wondering if she was going to be getting it. Wanted us to be able to tell her that, hopefully be able to tell her that she could have it for that date well in advance of the election. And the other item, of course, is the Cummings CTO. And some of the dates, Ms. Ames has told me that we have, have been changed slightly. Ms. Ames could tell us.
Yes, October 13th is actually the 14th. November 10th, they want the 11th and December 8th, they want the 9th. Ms. Silva emailed me late this afternoon and.
All those dates are available for them?
Yes, they are.
So if, if there aren't any objections, we'll, we'll take their request as, as corrected by Ms. Ames this evening. And if there are no objections, we'll consider both, both requests at the same time. Motion. Motion by Vice Chairman Carron.
Second.
Second by President Gill. Any questions or comments? We'll vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? It's unanimous. Thank you. Next is high school fundraising request. Do we have anyone to speak to the high school fundraising request? Principal. Ms. Bellastock?
I'm having fun here.
Right here.
Oh.
Bellastock, if I could ask you, would you be able to?
NHS?
Here?
Yes, I just don't remember where we were on.
I got it right here for you.
No, I started. I'm not really sure where they ended off on these. I know for the brick engraving, the bricks are ready. They're over at the trailer, so we just have to go pick them up. So I know that the high school seniors are gonna go get them. I don't know where they're gonna store them. What else are we talking about on this? I can't remember where we were.
Tree planting fundraiser.
Tree planting, I haven't heard any more about that, so I think they were, I think the group was more focusing on, on some of the other fundraisers. The bottle project. The bottle project. Did they get approval for their, their book sale last time?
Yes.
Book club is all set.
The book club is all set. Okay, so we're okay with it. They actually started a, a signup sheet at the high school where kids can sign up to pledge to use our new bottle, a new water bottle dispenser as opposed to use, bringing in plastic bottles. So, we get students already signing up to pledge to use it. So, that's really good. And the other one, I think that was it, wasn't it? Was there anything else?
No.
Just the brick engraving fundraiser, which is, you know, I mean, we've reserved 30 blocks or 30 bricks for the students if this were to go through and they feel that would be a nice... And I believe this is off of the National Honors Society, correct?
Yes, absolutely, National Honors.
And then the tree planting and book club, which was approved, and the bottle project.
All right. So, are they still, do they still have any questions that need to be answered?
I'm not clear as to what we're being asked to approve this evening.
Oh, so, I believe they're asking if we would approve the brick engraving fundraiser.
Okay.
Which is that the, it'll engrave bricks, people could get their locker numbers, you know, put on the bricks, short message memory. That was one of the items. The bottle project, in light of the environment, they want to do fundraiser to, to hold used book sales. So, I mean, at this point, I feel more comfortable saying to you that I recommend the brick engraving fundraiser. On the other two, if you feel you need more information from what they've said, we can ask.
Absolutely.
She was here earlier and I should have probably pulled her up first.
Right now, I'm just...
That was my fault.
Okay. So, is there a motion to approve the brick engraving fundraiser? Motion by Mrs. Sharkey.
Second.
Second by Mr. Karen. Any questions?
So...
We've got a vote on the brick fundraising now. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Obstentions? Unanimous? Did you want to say something?
I had to go back to the group to find out, to get more information on the tree fundraising. I know they were talking to a, a, the farm, Emerson Farms, so I was making some more confirmation as to exactly what the cost and, and the details of that. I think, and I think the book club is all set. And I think the bottle project is gonna be just the result of the money that they raise for, for these all the other funds.
The tree planting, they may need to work with DPW.
Absolutely.
If I may, I might make a recommendation that they may want to touch base also with Highland Real Estate tonight, who was looking for students and stuff. So, this might be a nice little merge here. We can work with the DPW, but that might be our connection.
Mr. Plino's proposal did include working with...
Correct. So, this might be the ticket.
I think the only difference to this is they wanted to be sponsored by, by a business or a family to raise money. And I'm not sure if that was his intent.
I think it was a little bit.
Yeah.
Excellent, perfect. I will go back and talk to them. Brick engraving has been approved?
Yes.
And I'll talk to them about the tree planting. And I think the bottle project is just gonna be a result of the money they raise. And we'll come back to you once we get, I know they've started talking to local businesses about advertising on the bottles. So, but I have a feeling we're still another couple months away from that. They'll be back. Hopefully, I did them justice.
I'll let you know.
Yeah, they will. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bellisstock. Next item is the mandatory background checks. Can you, Mr. Holden spoke about earlier when he talked about the policy stuff. I'm not sure there's anything else to be said about that at this time. Policy committee will reconvene at some point to discuss the details of a policy. Donation of sign from Winthrop Playmakers. Remember, we talked about this. It's the sign in front of the Winthrop Playmakers Building on Herman Street, next to, next door to the Arthur T. Cummings School, and whether or not the school committee is going to accept that as a donation.
If I may, I did talk to the Winthrop Playmakers to clarify expenses and what those expenses would be. There'll be no expenses at all to the school. The, the Honin Sign has donated to remove the sign from the playmakers and to put it, I shouldn't say donate, playmakers are gonna take care of that with the Honin Sign Company. But they would take it and put it, install it where we would like it, out in front of the high school auditorium. They would also refurbish, if anything needed to be refurbished, they would take care of that as well. The other question is, is what would we, you know, how would it work in there? That, that marquee is very good for posters. And now that we have the possibility of a poster maker, it really does help there because basically what, you know, you want to put a nice, large posters in there that could be well utilized for all our student events as well as anything that's going on in the theater. But primarily, they understand that it was gonna, it's gonna marquee. And then the other piece is, is that we do not have any visual right now over at the Winthrop High School. And the question is, do we want to invest in something, whereas we don't have to with this right now. We could utilize that to what it is, and then in two years, we would have something else at the new high school. So, my recommendation to you all is that you allow us to accept that donation and we will make sure that it's at no expense at all to Winthrop Public Schools.
I think I was very skeptical of this at the last meeting. I'll tell you that I intend to vote yes this evening to accept it. Is there a motion to accept the gift? Motion by Mrs. Sharkey. Second by Mr. Holden. Any questions?
I just, what happens to this when the new high school is no longer, when, when the Pauline Street High School is no longer?
Well, it's ours. We could, we could, we could, I mean, we'll, at that point, we'll own it because they've donated to us, we've accepted it, and we can move it wherever we want to, but it would be, at that point, would be at our expense.
So, at this point, there's no, no...
Right.
Okay, thank you.
It's a great addition for the next two years, at least.
But whoever took over the, the place might want to utilize it as a marquee as well.
We will vote then. All in favor of accepting the sign from the Winthrop Playmakers, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Obstentions? Unanimous? New business? Anybody have any new business that we should discuss? If not, we'll go back to public comment. Ms. Chavez, thank you so much, I think.
It's too early for me to comment on school yet, but I will have some comments. But I did want to ask Mr. Lucero, I understood that Mrs. Keller, her salary was only for six months, and yet you plan on using the balance of her salary to pay for this curriculum person, which I did not see in your budget for January to June. That's just an observation.
Right. What I did do is took it out of, so when we, if I may, can I just, I don't know if, what, when we reduced from four principals to three principals, when Ms. Finocchio left, we never replaced that position as well. So, there's money in there to make up for that position. We didn't replace the current principal. We went from, we went from originally having seven positions that we were gonna have in the administration, where we were gonna have two assist, you know, four assistants to three principals, to right now, we have three principals, three assistant principals. So, there was a position that was still out in that area.
Which will be fine until two years from now.
Correct, correct, right.
And the other thing, is this Mr. Stackel that you hired?
Yes.
Was that in your budget too?
No, we, that, that was, we were able to...
I know we talked about it.
Right, we utilized money from the tech area to put it in there.
Thank you, Ms. Chavez. Public relations. Mrs. Sharkey?
There are a few that we have. I just wanted to let Karen know, because sometimes they don't get the papers that are being sent home in their backpacks. But there is a program being offered, a new program. It's part of the Winthrop Public Schools in partnership with Kathy's Place and the 21st Century Grants. And what it is, it will provide sixth and seventh graders an opportunity to go over to Kathy's Place to get supported in academic and homework. If, if the kids have projects to do, they will be interconnected with their classroom tees, the students with their classroom teachers. And so, it will be offered for 32 weeks during the school year. It starts September 22nd and it ends November 20th, the first session. And it's $225 for each session. They need a minimum of 10 students to get this up and running. The teachers will be Winthrop Middle School teachers to support the children in this program. So, I think it's an excellent program if, especially for those students who need that extra support and need the comradeship also of having other children with them. So, I think that's good. Also, there's a Making Stride Against Breast Cancer, the American Cancer Society, and it's really has always been supported by the speaker, Bob Delio, and it's called Making Strides Against Breast Cancer. And it's October 5th in Boston, and he always provides rides from Michael Small at 7:45 on that morning. You can call Anita Flintoff or sign up online. And Anita's number is 617-722-2500 if you want to get information on that. We also have Neil Shapiro's Walk, John...
Nope, nope, you got it.
Neil, Neil Shapiro's Memorial Walk is a 5,000 walk run. It's held at Deer Island. It's five, uh, 5,000 miles.
5K.
5K. And again, all of the proceeds benefit Viking Pride for arts and activities for our Winthrop High School students. And it's for a teacher and a mentor, Neil Shapiro, who was an outstanding drama coach, an outstanding coach, and an outstanding person who lost his life very young, too young. And we also have Marie Petrilli Walk, which is also a walk for cancer. Registration is at Deer Island. It's 9:30 to 10:30 for the registration. It's this Saturday. It's the two and a half mile walk around Deer Island. And I'm sorry, I don't have, but you can go on mariepetrillifundraiser.com. I think that's what it is. Excuse me if I'm wrong. But it's easy to find it. And, but that's also in support of cancer. And I know there's a big, this is cancer month, breast cancer month, and that's why we have some of these. And also, there is a big, for those who are interested, a show with all the celebrities supporting Cure for Cancer. That will be on, I believe it's, I'm sorry, I can't even remember, but it is this week. So, for those of you who would like to see, and I'm sure you support Money Wise too. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, one thing, sorry. I met Karen Strezario, is it you?
Yes, librarian.
Library, on Saturday. And I have to tell you what a wonderful young man he is. And also, he's looking for people to join his Friends of the Library. He's really enthusiastic. I mean, you know, he looks like he's 12, but, and, but a really, really fine, well-spoken young man. His wife is also a librarian. So, if any of your friends or any of us here, I have intentions of signing up to be a Friends of the Library, it would be greatly appreciated. And so, that's it.
Thank you, Mrs. Sharkey.
Not to belabor the point, but I have to mention John's, talk about the partnership, being council president as well as a member of the school committee. The partnership that has been shown over the last couple of years, but specifically on this particular move of the transition, has been heartwarming. The, the men and the women who pitched in. And as John said, I witnessed the same thing as you walked through the, the school, the guy on the, on the DPW or the woman that was doing this or doing that would pull you over and say, what do you think of this? And there was a, there was a great enthusiasm there. And I also, if you talk to Mr. McKenna, you'll find out that I focus on what I call my small stuff. And I think back to the song that Carrie probably doesn't remember, Little Things Mean a Lot. And what seems to be little things, like water fillers in the bubbler and, and clean bathrooms and, and plants around the Salucci tree that was, you know, it didn't look well, it didn't look good. It does now. And all of those things outside of the building as well as inside the building, I feel really set the pace for the kids when, when they walk into the building. And it sets the pace and it's good, not only aesthetically, it's good for the whole atmosphere of the kids. But again, I have to talk about the partnership, and I'm stealing the word from John, that we've seen in this move, but also throughout the system, the attitude of people working together is tremendous, and I thank our staff.
Yeah, I wanted to mention tonight that International Walk to School Day is October 8th. And I'm gonna try to not be last minute this year, like I have been in the past, but, so, this'll be the fourth year that the Gorman Fort Banks School is participating. Last year, the Arthur T. Cummings School participated as well. Georgiana Coleman has been a, a great cooperative partner with me, and she's super excited about getting the Cummings students involved again this year. And so, the date for that is October 8th. We'll certainly be looking for leaders in the town to walk groups of students and parents to school like we have in the past, if anybody wants to volunteer for that. And I'll talk to you because Georgiana's husband recorded a brilliant song about walking to school with, to the music of a very popular Top 40 song right now, and so...
So, you want me to do a connected and sing it?
Sure. But we thought that not only could the phys ed teachers be involved, like they have been in the past, at welcoming, you know, revving the kids up for the physical activity, but perhaps Mr. Sherwin and the new music teacher at Fort Banks, I don't know her name, sorry, could be involved as well in kind of pumping kids up for this ahead of time because there are physical and, you know, mental benefits to walking to school. Winthrop is a super walkable town, and we would like to show people how easy it is to get to school on your feet. So, October 8th, if you guys want to mark in your calendars, and I'll be sending you an email to recruit you all to try to get groups of kids to walk to school.
Thank you.
So, in regards to public relations, I do want to just thank the school building assistance committee for all their work that they've done, you know, as well thus far. And they've got a lot of work ahead, as we will be next Monday night. We are now at the point where we are working on, you know, different materials and things about the building and really getting into that. So, just want to make sure that I give a shout out to them.
Thank you. Next, we are adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
May I ask to have Mr. ...
Yeah, could I make a motion to refer back to public comment?
Certainly, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to refer back to public comment.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
I do not have a public comment. My mother has a public comment, and she feels that for $6 million, you don't get a bench, you get a building. So, that's her public comment for the...
I understand.
Thank you.
Thanks, Greg.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mail.
I wanted more...
Thank you to your mother.
I will be thanked, sir.
Next, we are at, we're at adjournment again. Is there a motion to adjourn this time? Motion by Ms. Sullivan.
Second.
Second by President Gill. Questions, comments, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Obstentions? Unanimous? We adjourn. Just an example.